Good evening. The meeting of the Aurora City Council is hereby called to order for November 10, 2020. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Here.
Alderman Garza?
Here.
Alderman Masiacos?
Present.
Alderman Donnell?
Here.
Alderman Franco?
Here.
Alderman Seville?
Here.
Alderman Hartburns?
Here.
Alderman Smith?
Here.
Alderman Bug?
Here.
Alderman Lauchey?
Here.
Alderman Jenkins?
Here.
Alderman O'Connor?
Here.
Mayor Irvin's present.
On June 26, 2020, the Governor of Illinois issued a statewide disaster declaration related to public health concerns. As a head of this body, I've determined that an in-person meeting or a meeting otherwise conducted in accordance with the Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the disaster. This meeting will be conducted by internet teleconference without the physical presence of a quorum. Prior to commencement of this meeting, all members of this body were verified that they can see and hear one another. I further find that if the physical presence of members of the public is not feasible at this meeting due to the disaster. And more specifically, the practical difficulties associated with accommodating the public in an accessible hygienic location that allows for appropriate social distancing. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussions on roll call votes live on the city's official website, on Facebook, and via Zoom teleconference. Notice means arrangements have been given in accordance with the Openset Meetings Act. The public may address the body consistent with the rules previously adopted and recorded and as adapted by mayoral order. I, Mayor Richard Seer, am physically present at our regular meeting location as defined by Resolution R 20-124. All votes shall be conducted by roll call and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Openset Meetings Act. Mohammed. And if everybody else will place themselves on mute, as Mr. Mohammed begins introducing folks that will be at the pledge, as well as who will be giving the invocation this evening. So Alderman Garza also is on mute as well. Everybody on mute.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Tonight, leading the Pledge of Allegiance for tonight's City Council are young leaders in Cub Scout Pack 643. They're all fifth graders from three schools, Stack, McCartney, and Georgetown in Indian Prairie School District 204. They met this evening with the mayor for one of their civic participation events right before City Council. These young guys are volunteer in Aurora for a number of things. They've been in our Memorial Day Parade. They participated at the Aurora Area Interfaith Food Pantry, the Feed My Starving Children and Food Drives throughout the city. And they also volunteer with wreaths across America where they help to lay wreath at soldiers' graves. So we can give a wave and a shout out to these 13 young guys, David Sebastian, Yafar, Shlok, Ben, Aiden, Kevin, Ben, Quinn, Eric, Eli, Carson, and Garrett. There's a lot of them here tonight, and so there won't be one screen on, but we ask that they all unmute. And thank you again, Kim Ginsburg, for taking the lead, and we'll turn it over to the young guys to lead us in the pledge.
All right, gentlemen, are we ready? On three, please. One, two, three. I pledge allegiance.
Hey, Cub Scout Pack 643. Great to have all sorts of the guys, their parents, their faculty, everyone. Thank you again. We're proud of all the work that you're doing. If you can put yourselves back on mute, you're free to stick around with us for the meeting, or you can, I know you have some homework to do as well. But thank you, Kim, and the crew. We appreciate you. Mayor, leading tonight's invocation is Priest Baghdar Nagendra Rao from Bellaji Temple right here in Aurora, Illinois. On Saturday is Diwali 2020. We are so honored to have the priest here with us this evening to lead us in prayers. Priest Rao? Priest Rao, you're on mute. There we go. You're still on mute, priest. There we go. Thank you, sir.
Om Sri Gurupiyonamaha. Hare Om. Ganaanantva. Ganapadigumhavamahay. Tavinkaveenam. Upamashravastaman. Yes tarajambrambhanaan. Brahmbhanaspada. Om. Stireyirangai. Om. Shanti. Shanti. Shantihi. Om. Channobitrasyamvarunaha. Channobavatvargyama. Channagindrobhraspatihi. Channovishthuropramaha. Namabrahmbhane. Namastheyvayoyo. Vaveva pratyakshambrahmadisyami. Pratamvadisyami. Satyamvadisyami. Tanmavatu. Tatvagtaramavatu. Avatumam. Avatuvagtaram. Om. Shanti. Shanti. Shantihi. Om. Sahnavavatu. Sahnubhunaktu. Tejasvinaavadi. Om. Shanti. Shanti. Shantihi. Asatomaasagamaya. Om. Shanti. Shanti. Shantihi. Happy Deepavali to everybody. Wishing you may long. Balaji brings all health, wealth, prosperity to our community. Happy Deepavali. Thank you.
Thank you, Priest Baghdar Nagendra Rao for your prayers.
Thank you, priest.
And happy Diwali to you. And we look forward to a celebration at a different sense of this year, Mayor, as Saturday brings us Diwali 2020. Tonight, not only do we have Priest Rao with us from Bellaji Temple, we have two of our leaders of the Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board, Rupa and Gb, who are here with us to accept the proclamation this evening as we proclaim November 14, 2020 as Diwali, the festival of lights here in the city of Aurora. I'll read part and turn it over to you, Mayor, then we'll hear from Rupa from the Indian American Board. Whereas more than 1 billion celebrants worldwide observe the holy day of Diwali to mark the beginning of the Hindu New Year on November 14, 2020. And whereas Diwali, the festival of lights, symbolizes the victory of Dharma and good over evil, it is one of the most celebrated festivals in the world. It signifies a special time of peace and serenity with the hope of building bridges of understanding and tearing down bridges, barriers of intolerance. And whereas the city of Aurora's Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board hosted the first citywide Diwali festival in Aurora in 2014 and each year thereafter, bringing together thousands of residents in unity and peace. Whereas while this year may prohibit large gatherings, the true spirit of Diwali continues to permeate our community where diversity represents one of our greatest strengths and inclusion is one of our meaningful goals.
Now, therefore, I, Richard Seer, Mayor of the City of Aurora, on behalf of the Aurora City Council and all Auroraans, do hereby recognize historical and religious significance of Diwali and Diwali's message of tolerance, compassion, and the victory of good over evil, which resonates with the American spirit. Be it further resolved, the city of Aurora proudly expresses its deepest respect for the Indian American and South Asian American communities, our fastest-growing communities in Aurora, and all of those who celebrate the festival of Diwali on November 14, 2020.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll turn it to Rupa, who's our Chair of the Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board. We've got some Batsi is also here with us. Rupa.
Good evening, everyone. This is Rupa Anjanapa. I'm the Chair for the Aurora's Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board. On behalf of the board, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council members for tonight's Diwali proclamation. I would like to say a few words about Diwali. Diwali, also known as Deepavali, is a Hindu festival of lights which is celebrated by Indians all over the globe. The festival is also celebrated by other religions like Sikhs, Jains, and some Buddhists with varying religious significance. Deepavali, which translates as a row of lights, is celebrated over a period of three to five days with homes and streets lit up with light and displays of fireworks outside. Diwali has historical significance from ancient India with Lord Rama returning from the exile that dates back to 7,322 B.C. and Lord Krishna defeating demon Naraka and culmination of various other religious significance. In respect to all the events associated with Diwali, the festival symbolizes victory of light over darkness, good over evil, and knowledge over ignorance, and also depicts sharing, caring, and giving. As part of giving back to the community, the board has given out $20,000 in scholarship for the college-bound students in Aurora, including the $4,000 which we gave out this year. The recipients are typically announced during the Diwali time, and it has been shared on both Facebook page. I am also delighted to announce that the board has organized a face mask giveaway on December 9, 2020 between 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Festival of Lights at Phillips Park in Aurora. The board has collaborated with Rotary Club Aurora in this venture. A heartfelt thanks to our sponsor, Patel Brothers, for their continued support. With this, I want to conclude by wishing all the attendees a happy Deepavali, and I hope to see you all on the Festival of Lights on December night. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Rupa, and Gautam, and the entire board. We look forward to joining you with Festival Likes, joining forces together with Rotary December 9 again, that is, City Council 5 to 9. They will be there handing out face masks and working to be Festival Lights as volunteers, a great partnership in the city of Aurora. Thank you. Happy Diwali. Thank you, priest. Thank you, Rupa and Gautam.
Thank you.
Our final announcement, Mayor, tomorrow is Veterans Day. We look forward to honoring our veterans, of course, on Veterans Day, but every day throughout the year. And we also enter Tier Two mitigations tomorrow, which limits gathering sizes to 10 people or less. Fortunately, we already had a virtual ceremony planned, so we didn't have to pivot it last minute to replan. Tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. on Facebook Live, we have a virtual ceremony honoring our veterans with some presentations and donations to the Veterans Advisory Council and conversations with local veterans who speak to the theme of serving our country and our community, including our own mayor, U.S. Army veteran, Richard Ergin. Happy Veterans Day to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it, and we appreciate all of our guests that we had tonight during our presentations and the Young Boy Scout group that gave the pledge. Thank you all. Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
All right, will you please read the preamble, ma'am?
Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Ma'am, will you call the first speaker?
Mark Straits?
Mr. Straits, can you hear my voice? Mr. Straits?
He's on mute, Mayor.
Mr. Straits, can you take yourself off of mute? Mr. Straits? Do you see him on with us, though, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, Mayor, he is there, but he is muted.
All right, well, we'll come back to Mr. Straits, who evidently can't hear us. All right, is there another speaker?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so is it possible that you can take Mr. Straits off mute, or is that not a possibility?
I cannot. He is on a telephone. He must do it himself.
Yeah. Mr. Straits, I'll give you a few more seconds to answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I sure can. Sir, you have three minutes to speak.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Irvin and everyone on the council. Hope you're all doing well. It's a crazy storm out there. I'm calling in because I really wanted to let you all know about some of the positive things that I've seen recently in the area of Chestnut Square. You might know or remember Chestnut Square is a specially zoned area. It's both commercial and residential. It's on the edge of downtown Aurora. It's east of Chestnut Street, and it's between Galena and Downer. It's designated a historical district and has landmark properties. So the area has had its challenges in the past. Landlords, some didn't know how to screen tenants, and there was even drug dealing in the parking lot out in the open, and maintenance was not really very good. So some of you might remember that about three years ago, a zoning change request for 315 Downer was requested from single-family to special business to our four zoning. Back then, the city council unanimously agreed to keep the existing single-family zoning, and since then, it really was that action that brought together a small group of the community that we call the Friends and Neighbors of Chestnut Square. So I'm happy to say that since then, things really have continued to go in the right direction. This afternoon, I spoke with Aurora Police Officer Christopher Moore. A few years ago, he helped put together a CPTED report, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And many of his initiatives in this report have already been accomplished, things like adding better lighting, trimming back trees and hedges. The parking lot's been freshly blacktopped and striped, and the maintenance has really improved. So working with Dolan's, Dolan and Murphy, they're the main players because they control the easement for the parking lot area. And with Alderman Donnell, property standards, Aurora Police, Pastor Gary McCann of New England Church, and landlords and neighbors, most of the drug dealing and the crime really seems to be under control. Landlords are taking better care of their properties and have more pride. A few months ago, the house at 331 West Downer, which is part of Chestnut Square, was sold as a single-family residence. Elizabeth Tejas continues to live in and operate her accounting firm out of her historical landmark place at 305 West Downer. Several months ago, when my tenants, who had his law office here at 20 South Chestnut for many years, moved out of state, I decided to...
Mr. Straits, you're three minutes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Madam Clerk, did you already indicate that you did not have any additional speakers?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next section of the agenda. Before we do, as Mr. Alexandria pointed out a little earlier, it's very possible that each of you, Alderman, can lose power. I believe Mr. Jenkins, Alderman Jenkins, has already lost power, but I think is back on by way of telephone. Is that correct, Alderman? Are you on with us? Okay, so Alderman Jenkins is not back yet. If you should...
Hello.
Yeah, you're here. Okay, Alderman Jenkins is back on by way of telephone. So if you should lose power at your home, just come back on with your cell phone if possible. We will continue on as long as we have a quorum finish this meeting this evening. All right, let's go on to mayoral appointments. Clerk, can you read the first item under mayoral appointments?
20-0665, a resolution appointing Judy Durham to the Block Grant Working Committee.
So move. Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions regarding this resolution? There being no questions or discussion, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Well, ladies.
All right, motion carries. The resolution is approved. I believe Ms. Durham is unable to be on City Council with us on Zoom this evening, so we just thank her for her service. Next, we will hear both the direct-to-council consent agenda and the consent agenda together in full. The clerk, now read both agendas in full.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can I just confirm that the agenda is showing on the screen?
It is.
Thank you. 20-0146, a resolution authorizing the execution of a local public agency agreement for federal participation with the state of Illinois, the execution of a Phase III construction engineering agreement with H.R. Green Incorporated, and the not-to-exceed amount of $895,105.94 and the appropriation of $4,448,257 of rebuild Illinois bond funds for the East New York Street Segment III Farnsworth Avenue to Welsh Drive project. 20-0471, an ordinance amending Chapter 49 of the Code of Ordnances, City of Aurora, Illinois, commonly known as the Aurora Zoning Ordinance. 20-0629, a resolution to award a contract to H.R. Green Incorporated in the amount of $182,000 for design engineering services in accordance with Resolution R 19-053, a redevelopment agreement with Aurora Town Center Associates for engineering design work associated with Phase I of the agreement. 20-0634, a resolution authorizing the execution of real estate contracts to purchase properties and to appropriate motor fuel tax funds required for the East New York Street Segment III Farnsworth Avenue to Welsh Drive project, Section 14-00210-02-PV, in the amount of $21,500. 20-0647, a resolution establishing the maximum number of Class B onsite consumption licenses unofficially related to the application from El Burito Loco Aurora Incorporated, doing business as El Burito Loco at 880 North Farnsworth Avenue, Aurora, Illinois 60505. 20-0655, an ordinance designating the City of Aurora Fox Valley Mall Area Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area. 20-0656, an ordinance approving... Sorry. 56, an ordinance approving the City of Aurora Fox Valley Mall Area Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Project Area Redevelopment Plan and Project. 20-0657, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the City of Aurora Fox Valley Mall Area Tax Increment Financing District. 20-0658, an ordinance amending Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordnances, City of Aurora, in its entirety and repealing conflicting prior enactments. 20-0672, a resolution authorizing and approving an extension of the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Aurora and the Village of Plainfield. 20-0673, a resolution authorizing the execution of Phase II Design Engineering Amendment Number One with H.R. Green Incorporated in the not-to-exceed amount of $94,402.31 for the East New York Street Segment III Farnsworth Avenue to Welsh Drive project. 20-0676, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a replacement 2021 Ford Utility Police Interceptor from Curry Motors for $37,183. 20-0677, a resolution to reject all bids for 2021/2022 materials and supplies for the electrical division. 20-0696, a resolution entering into an agreement for a traffic impact analysis addendum for Orchard Road and Bushwood Drive property access with Iteris Incorporated. 20-0704, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for Scientell Solutions 2021 North Eola Road. 20-0705, a resolution accepting the improvements and waiving the maintenance security for Duke Parkway Extension at Barclay. 20-0707, approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, October 27, 2020 City Council meeting. 20-0730, a resolution accepting the improvements in maintenance security for Mitchell Road Industrial Park Lot 1, Lots 2 and 3, and Lot 4, 945 Corporate Bull.
So move. Second.
Are there any questions or motions to remove items from either the direct-to-council consent agenda or the regular consent agenda? With no motions to remove, there's been a motion to accept both agendas by Alderman Hartburns and seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any further questions on either agenda? With there being no further questions, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Well, ladies.
All right, motion carries. The direct-to-council consent agenda and consent agenda are both approved. All right, there is no unfinished business for this evening. There is no new business for this evening. There are no reports for this evening. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills?
So move.
And a motion by Alderman Hartburn, seconded by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on bills? There are none. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alderman Lauchey.
Yeah, I asked just recently, so it hasn't been long, but number six, payments to CDW. It's a very large payment. I wonder if anybody had any backup on that. Like a million dollars. At 968.
Mayor, members of the City Council, those are multiple payments off the... I do not have them in front of me, but a large portion of that is all for the camera work that was originally approved in 2019 for $1.4 million. So that involves several progress payments that we had been holding up a little bit, waiting for an actual report on the status of the camera project. And I see Mr. Pegasus jumped on, so he might be able to also shed light on detail.
Yes, thank you, Marty. So as Marty mentioned, it was for the video modernization system upgrade, which consisted of surveillance camera installation and access cards inside of the Aurora Police Department, also the DFC Building, Fire Station 8, and water and sewer. And I believe that is it. Those were the major projects. So if there's any questions with regards to that, I wasn't happy to answer.
So somebody has a full report, and it's approved?
Yes. As I said, the original invoices started coming in a couple of months ago, and we held though while we awaited the update. I'm sure IT can provide a counsel to actual, meaning what did we put forth, the counsel versus what do we have then? We have all the details as far as making the payments. And I don't know if Jolene Coulter is on, but we do have all the backup for invoices that would comply with the original proposal submitted by CDW.
Okay. Any other questions? There being none, clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Donnell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchey?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Well, ladies.
Motion carries. The bills are approved. There is no need for a closed session this evening.
Move adjourn.
Hold. I'm sorry, who was that?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman O'Connor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, before we adjourn, I just had one question. I think some of us are aware that a number of restaurants in Aurora are still having indoor service. Is there anything that we are looking into or doing in that regard?
Mr. Alexandra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman O'Connor, we have been working closely with all four health departments, county health departments. They have the primary jurisdiction over restaurants in the four counties. We have discussed with the governor's office on a number of occasions, as well as the Illinois Department of Public Health, our belief and our feelings about the desire[1780.14] uh, our belief and our feelings about, uh, the desire for equal enforcement uh, and equal application. Um, but ultimately, uh, the jurisdiction is proactive and the main responsibility of the county health departments to enforce the governor's orders. Uh, ours is more reactive and in many cases we don't have the ability to take any, uh, legal action. So, we have been um, supporting the health departments, reporting to the health departments. When we get complaints, um, it continues to be our belief that um, with everything spiking right now to levels even worse than this past spring in the pandemic, that we continue to urge folks to do the right thing, to follow the guidance. It's very difficult. There's no question. Uh, but we are headed to potentially additional mitigation measures. And we, we are at a point now where we just have to hunker down and and, and follow, um, our health officials', uh, direction. We, we also applaud and thank those restaurants and businesses who have worked hard to, uh, maintain, um, compliance and we urge others who are not to, to perhaps rethink where they're at because, um, the news is not getting better from our local hospitals. The positivity rate is skyrocketing, but not just the positivity, but actual admissions to hospitals and, um, emergency rooms. Um, we have put back our weekly VEOC, our, uh, virtual EOCs to a weekly basis. And, um, we're hoping and praying that things will improve, but right now they're not. But the health department has been responsive. It just depends on where you're at and which county.
So, if we have a concern, we should make contact directly with the health departments?
That is correct. And, you know, we continue to, to meet with them and forward information to them. Um, the mayor's office, a number of us are on different committees and task force, uh, that are collaborative in nature. But again, our, um, our ability to actually enforce is, is very limited right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we close out? Alderman Masiacos?
Thank you, mayor. Um, on a different note, I'm not sure everybody knows, but, uh, in light of the fact that tomorrow's November eleventh, we're celebrating Veterans Day. Our, uh, Aurora near, uh, Dr. Brian Caputo has been recently named Chicago Business twenty twenty Notable Veteran Executive. So, just want to share that with everybody. That just happened recently as well, and I think it's great for our city also. Considering a lot of us, uh, knew him personally, working as a CFO for the city of Aurora recently, a few years ago.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? There being none, I believe there was a motion by Alderman Hardburns to adjourn, seconded by Alderman Franco. Um, the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos?
Yes.
Alderman Denell?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hardburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lauchy?
Yes.
Alderman Jenkins?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
Well, these.
Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. You guys be safe this evening with all those. Bye now. Have a good night.
Thank you, Governor.